All right, the meeting will be recorded. Let's start our work session. All right, I guess the first item on the agenda is new items of discussion which would be PA StarNet contract. We have in front of us a contract to sign between Warren County and Pennsylvania State Police regarding the statewide degree of network StarNet. And we have Todd here. Todd, would you like to speak to this thing?
Sure. This is just an intergovernmental agreement between Warren County and Pennsylvania State Police slash the state to be able to use the networks that we've already followed up to use, but just to formalize it in writing. I know I sent Pam, I'm sure she sent it on to Solicitor Tree, I didn't say that fast, to look it over, obviously the state has to look it over also. But I'd read it all quite thoroughly a couple times. At first when I saw the five-year date on it, I was a little apprehensive, but then I realized it's five years and then review it. It's not an expiration issue of five years. It shall be reviewed every five years. And either party terminated it, they must be given three years' written notice. So we can't just all of a sudden pull the law off and run it through, you know, us within, you know, ninety days or something like some of their contracts. This is a full, a full three years. So as far as I look, it's, you know, we reviewed in five years and if they want to, you know, change something in five years and we don't like it, we can pull it out, we can do anything and we still have three more years. So we're guaranteed at least eight years, which puts us through at least, you know, if the new governor is elected in this year, that still puts it through his reelection and then the new president. So that puts us into a good, you know, a good timeframe. We don't get a new governor this time, it goes, it obviously goes at least through the next election, so we're guaranteed through at least, at least-
Two administrations.
-two administrations, you know. Maybe, you know, if the new one's elected and now, maybe only one, but it'll get us through that, that it won't be, you know. I was, I was happy with that and I guess just Solicitor Tree or any of the three commissioners who had any questions or comments, but it's pretty much what it really, you know, it's no cost to us.
That's some pretty general.
Yeah, it's real general because it's, it's really all it is, is the name is their equipment, they're paying for it. And if we need more equipment, we have to pay for it. It's just kind of, it's really not much of a, let's see, not much of a, a really, pretty bare bones.
Okay. It says responsibilities of the Pennsylvania State Police. Number one bulleted comment here is allow Warren County to use PA StarNet at no cost. Pennsylvania State Police will assist Warren County in the setup and interface to the PA StarNet and allow Warren County to expand StarNet at Warren County's expense.
Correct.
So that says it all. And this is the coordination of emergency communications from that county and amongst the Commonwealth County and first responders to improve operability and coverage and interoperability. So, State Police have required this agreement from us to use their system.
Well, and it's just, and plus two, it's, it's an agreement that we, we were supposed to have in place before I could ask for the 15% funding from the state, but because we've already per se bought into it, they're going to allow us to, you know, request that funding in the way of, when we're older, you know, they're going to allow us to put in for the application because we wouldn't actually be getting the funding or needing the funding until, because obviously, you know, the commissioners, if this so choose to sign this on Wednesday, it's still got to go to two different places in the state, you know, for the, you know, they each have thirty days, so it would be sixty days. An application for that money, you have to put in by the end of the month, but I've already talked to Deputy Director for NIMR, Jeff Boyle, and it's not an issue because we've already bought it overall and, you know, so it's, it's a, you know, it's not disagreement, but it's, you know, those types.
It's half agreement.
It's an agreement, so they know that we're, you know, because you can only ask for that if you're doing an all-in approach. If you're just trying to partner with the state to do some stuff, that money's not available. It's only all-in. Actually, there's almost piled of equipment in my office and Ken's office too. Stuff that's very-
It's coming in.
It's weird because it's not-
Have you worked with anyone yet in bringing them about the rules?
No, no, because we still have to change, you know, all of that equipment and they have to actually assemble it and get it up and running.
Calibrate it.
Yeah, I guess they're going to actually, some of the stuff is supposed to have been delivered to Harrisburg, but somebody forgot to check the right line, so they're going to end up having to, after it all comes in, somebody's going to come and haul all of the Harrisburg, because they've got, they set up a place down there for staging all of it where they can, they'll have the space to hook them onto the system, make sure everything works, you know, before we take, you know, ownership of the, of the actual equipability of the NIMR center. But like I said, it's, it started coming in and it's, of course, you know, when you're buying this big package here, it's like, you know, this piece of equipment is coming from Black Box Company, this piece of equipment is coming from HP, so we're getting stuff like two boxes in the morning from FAGS and two in the afternoon from UPTNets, and then a big truck will show up and get it boxes on it, so.
Can you work with Pam and Ken McCorson on a summary document that we could send to townships, the township supervisors to kind of explain the timeline and any impact that they may have? And I think that there should be one that's like general, and then there should be one that should be like specifically for like Conalongo Township and any other township where there are big major impacts to their, what they do. Like in Conalongo Township, for instance, they have a tower site in their, in their township that I'm pretty sure is one of the ones that's not going to be utilized after this is-
Right.
-done. So they, they need to be made aware of that now and, and, and I bring this up because in the meetings that I've had, you know, going to township meetings, this has been brought up several times. And although I realize that they're not necessarily directly related to fire service or, you know, in many cases, some of them, you know, most of them obviously don't have police forces and that, I think it's important for them to be made aware of like how this is going to shake out, like so that they can, if they're, whether they need to coordinate or just be informed, I think that's going to be, I think that's important.
Yeah, so we just had a meeting last week with Motorola and we're starting to work on a timeline, so.
Yep. Well, I realize everything's still to some degree general because, and you're waiting for certain things to happen, but like even if it's just a general timeline so that they have a sense of what's going to happen.
You know, like Conalongo Township, they could, you know, whether they have to budget for that tower for the entire 2019 or part of it or whatever, so it's going to make sense.
Yeah, because like I think in Conalongo's case, I mean, I don't know the exact number, but I mean, it's thousands of dollars that they allocate for that, but they're not going to have to run there, so I think that would be good.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Do you know when, do you have an anticipated time that does be going out? The fire departments? No, no, because it's still going to be dependent on once everything comes in and, because we have to switch everything kind of once in a first.
It'll all be tested and proved before it's rolled out. And then I, I would assume that once you're comfortable with that, I think that's when you start talking to everybody about, okay, we're going to set, right?
Well, I have a board meeting to do, fire department, just wait, so that's one of my questions is going to come up. Yeah, it's definitely, you know, late 2019, or late 2018, early 2019, probably before we're going to be actually starting to hand radios out, you know.
It's not that long, but it's like you're, you're still trying to make sure that you've got your ducks in place.
Right, right.
So we're already going to go up to late 2018 and stuff.
Yeah, right, right. It's already, yeah, it's almost August, so it's, but their, their, Motorola's quite adamant they can kind of, you know, get the time frame moving along, so. And this is just a little, little piece of the puzzle to get this, you know. I don't know, because my time is probably going to be early 2019. Yeah, and if it's earlier, it's better.
I would just add that the, the major thing is really for the townships that have police departments or have any, is, is getting an understanding of what the maintenance situation's going to be past the three-year window. Like that should, for them, should be incorporated in there too, like an estimate of some kind of like what they can anticipate. And the idea was to, and I keep forgetting to talk to you about this, is to, whether you talk to Motorola or somebody else, but to get like a sense based on what they have, like what their, their, they should project, like hypothetical costs, maintenance, maintenance costs could be after three years.
Yeah, because, yeah, plus two, anything that, you know, that we're buying bare bones if they want.
Yeah, exactly, because some of them aren't going to, I mean, some of them, this isn't that important to, or they're not as cogged as enough other ones I know as specifically like what our maintenance costs are going to be. So that's, that's just why I throw that out there, like in putting anything together, I could keep that.
Because a lot of their maintenance costs are going to be dependent on whether they want to-
What they want to do, yeah.
If they want, you know, to put a maintenance agreement on their equipment or just replace it if it breaks, whatever, you know, I mean, that's going to kind of cost that warranty there, so.
All right, any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Todd, wouldn't it be more reliable if somehow townships are going to have this equipment that agree to a maintenance agreements? Can you make it mandatory because, I mean, you're probably got your equipment and you want it to run perfectly, but some people don't have the maintenance ability to know that something's wrong, but if you had a technician that checked it occasionally, like your equipment down there?
Right. There'll be a maintenance on the, our equipment and, you know, obviously the state's going to maintain the backbone. It's really, just comes down to the, just the radio, the portable radio in their hand and the radio in the vehicle. You know, a lot of, a lot of departments already have maintenance contracts with their existing equipment that would just get switched over to that.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. Any public comment?
Yeah, I have a comment. I want to know, being that we're going to have more than one in this county, could you give us a brief update on how you worked, opened your work session in Sheffield and went?
Okay, well, first, what's in the work session?
I don't mean, I don't mean-
No, the, the town hall went very well. There were, I, we keep meaning to send a news release out on it. There were fifteen or so people there, which I was very happy. I know in when I was standing there, I joked with Commissioner Caffey about dividing the doughnuts up between the two of us, because I, I was really concerned that nobody was going to show up. But it, it was really great. They had, everybody there had really great questions. It was very, they were really engaged. There were, half the audience was young people, like people under the age of thirty-five, so, and a couple of them very informed, you know, and asking about, you know, the major questions were about, you know, jobs, keeping young people. There were questions about flooding, flood insurance, the flood, the flood maps. There were questions about infrastructure, you know, like waterways and stuff like that, you know, coordinating with PennDOT and, you know, stuff along those lines, but they were all very good questions, so it was, it was, I thought it was a very successful one.
There was no questions pertaining to the fire service or fire protection?
There was, yeah, no, there were definitely questions about, you know, how do we deal with volunteer shortage, you know, how do we maintain fire service to the, to these communities that are kind of underserved or have, or have limited resources, you know, and I think that Commissioner Caffey spoke about that mostly because he's, he's more heavily involved in EMS and, you know, A and all of that. You know, and his, his discussion had to do with working through the COG in order to have, you know, to come up with some county-wide solutions.
So you, you have no plans in council and the, the other ones out here are just going to-
After we got done, I was very excited for the remainder of the meetings and in fact, we're adding one, we're adding another meeting in Youngsville, so there'll actually be six instead of five. Part of that was because I have several people that live in Youngsville that called me after the schedule came out and they were, they were like, oh, Warren, you, you did for everybody else but not for Youngsville, and it was like-
I heard the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, it was like, well, I, well, and I said to them, I said, well, there's one in Columbus and one in, in Grand Valley, and they're like, that's too far, you know? And so we're, we're going to do one, I believe at the Borough Building, right? Yeah, so, and that'll be the week after that and we're going to announce that date now, so.
It's going to be after August fifteenth.
Yeah, 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 which I, you know, I look forward to that too. We've always had very good meetings in Youngsville, so. And technically speaking, we're not having one at Warren, it's in Glade, like, but-
Yes, Glade Fire Hall.
Yeah, yeah, it's, but we felt the Glade Fire Hall was close enough that-
We had one at Warren every day, early-
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly.
Any other public comment? Okay, move on to quarterly objectives, Ben courses on the phone. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add, projects?
I don't have anything to bring up today.
Um, it's like, that looks like it gets out of the Bible. So am I crazy now, to be right in most of the BS. Anyway, one of the things that I wanted to talk to you about is that we're, the intern that we have, Austin Mustang, or Musante, sorry, very excited to work with him on a Northwest County Commissioners Association initiative. At the last Northwest County Commissioners Association meeting, there was a, a discussion about figuring out ways to have the Northwest counties coordinate on this whole election machine situation. Doug Hill, the executive director of CCAP, did a presentation and discussed the fact that the governor has essentially mandated that election machines be updated with paper trail by the end of 2019. I at the time questioned how, well, we're going to be coordinating with the Northwest County Commissioners Association in order to give a coordinated response to the governor in order to push the governor to consider a more friendly timeline, especially budget-wise, and then also with the challenges next year. As the county commissioners in Pennsylvania as a whole will be running for reelection, they cannot serve on the elections board, so whatever decisions made elections-wide essentially has to be made prior, or by the end of this year, if you're going to roll it out next year, which is a major logistical challenge for the counties. So the one thing is, is we're going to be circulating, or we're going to have a letter circulated between the counties in order to send to the governor, and this goes along with the CCAP initiative, to try to push the governor to make a timeline that spans to probably 2021 with the idea of allowing us time in order to do concerted effort for 2021 rollout. The reason 2021 is, is a better date is because 2020 is the presidential year, which is a major challenge, that's a major logistical challenge in trying to roll out new equipment, new systems, and a lot of the systems that we're looking at are actually totally different in a lot of respects than what we're using now. So that's a challenge. The other thing that we're going to try to do is, is basically, it was brought up, a couple of the counties brought up a willingness to coordinate on trying to do a regional purchase of election equipment in order to save money, regionalize the system, and along the same lines of what happens with 911, like with the telephony project and some of the other ones. So we're currently circulating surveys between the counties in the Northwest, and this is what Austin will be helping, will be assisting with, is contacting the counties, gathering data, election systems, any information they have quote-wise in order to kind of build a data, like a warehouse of data that then everybody can use in their own evaluations. And then hypothetically, through that, figure out ways that we can maybe go county to county and, and make like a regional contracts or a regional contract in order to do election systems. The goal being to save money for everybody because these systems are very expensive and we want to do everything we can to save money on them, so. And, and like 911, I think is a really great example of the potential where when, you know, through Todd's work and others with these various regional programs, again and again, we see huge savings tax dollar-wise by making regional agreements, so. This is going to be the first one that I'm aware of, of this type through the Northwest County Commissioners Association. I mean, there've been others where there've been individual directors or systems that have been generated, but this is going to be pretty, if it works out, it'd be a pretty neat setup to, you know, try to get election equipment, because at the end of the day, if everything stays the way it is, we're going to have to do it. Like it's just, there's not a whole lot. I tried to ask if there was any leeway, you know, if we all collectively dragged our feet, like what would happen with the governor literally decertify all the machines and stuff and, and you, in that scenario, you get into a case of chicken that, you know, it's like, do you, you have to, if you, you know, it, it could be, could not work out well. Like there, there, there would be real major logistical challenges to that, so I think the, the key's going to be to getting a compromise with the governor, if at all possible, you know, to say, work with us and we'll, you know, everybody, because I think everybody has a willingness to want, I mean, we, there are challenges with machines and they, and to some degree, the shelf life is coming up very quickly, so they need to be replaced. It's just-
I don't know if you passed a shelf life.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're still working.
Yeah, it's still working.
We can see, we can see that they could continue to work, but it's like we need to, we need to do something. It's just, do you want to make that decision in the span of six months and then allocate resources? And for me, I get frustrated because really this is a big win for the election companies, you know, because they're all, you know, they're going to make it killing and it's like really we should have time to, get more time to negotiate, like under these circumstances, it makes it difficult to have a, you know, a real negotiation, but anyway, so that's one thing that I just wanted to share with everybody. I think that's it for me for now.
Okay, I think everyone will remember a few months ago, I brought up the deterioration of the helipad over at Warren General Hospital and the need to either revamp it, move it, do something with that. And I'm very happily surprised to see that our city of Warren is actually taking it upon themselves to put in for a grant, and I applaud their efforts. And what they intend to do is to move the helipad off from the river where it currently sits, so they're looking for grant funds in support of their efforts and hopefully they will be successful in that grant application. They've been very thorough in their comprehensive report that they've sent along with the grant application in outlining the struggles and the problems with the helipad and what they intend to do, their project description here is included. We all know that at times the river floods and it just continues to deteriorate that, that pad, causing a real issue for helicopters to land there. And the alternative site, which was up off from Fallat Run Road, is quite a distance to travel, you know, to the Warren General Hospital, especially, you know, in an emergency situation that's requiring a helicopter. So I applaud their efforts, the city's efforts, and, and very pleasantly surprised that they're, they're doing this and applaud their efforts. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And this morning, we met with an employee of Beacon Light and she has started a new 501(c)(3) and her 501(c)(3), the name is actually called CORE, C-O-R-E, Choosing Openness Regarding Experiences. And she wanted to meet with the commissioners this morning, so we met with her. She wanted to explain this opportunity that we might partake in to help her publicize this 501(c)(3) for her. It's Choosing Openness Regarding Experiences. It's a suicide prevention program which will provide Warren County with education and programming on suicide prevention and mental health. And what she has done so far is met with our school district and she has secured an opportunity to view and, not only view, but to go into the schools and maybe any other organizations within town, our, our county, to see the movie, and I'm forgetting the name of it, Jeff, do you remember?
Angst.
Angst, A-N-G-S-T. And they're going to be showing it at different high schools in the area and she came to us asking for not only support, but maybe to brainstorm with us to help her with different avenues of, of putting this information out to the public. And so I suggested the veterans, I don't know if she stopped down and talked to you?
Sure.
Okay, I know that, you know, suicide prevention would be a welcome program.
Do you have a point of contact?
Yeah, her name is Carrie Swanson, K-A-R-I-S-W-A-N-S-O-N, and she's an employee at Beacon Light, but her personal information is on a poster that I gave to Pam that she had given us this morning.
That went off in the email.
Oh, yeah.
I had a chance to look at my email this morning.
Yeah, it is in your email, and her information is on the bottom of that.
Okay.
So we gave her, I gave her a few different ideas of who she might want to contact and am hoping that this 501(c)(3) really takes root in Warren County and people embrace her and what she's trying to do. I think it's a very worthwhile cause. And I suggested that she might want to contact the Warren Times Observer and maybe they could sit down and, and have a conversation with her about what, what she's trying to do. So this is, you know, this meeting this morning was one of the, you know, we have all kinds of meetings, but this was a very worthwhile meeting and something that I think will really benefit Warren County.
Is this something she's doing on her own or something that's actually being done through Beacon Light?
She's starting it herself. She, she started this program herself.
Wasn't Detective Shimani in a female in here at one of your work sessions a few months ago? They converted EK's floor shelf over the south side for the same thing?
No.
No, that was a child advocacy, not an advocacy.
Something different.
No, this is, it's actually a really great program and a really great effort that she's making, just because there, there aren't many initiatives that I'm aware of that are solely focused on suicide prevention, and I think that that's a very worthy, like, and then the ideas that she has and the stuff she's doing is very impressive. I was, I thought it was a great meeting.
Yeah, she's been very busy planning this and, you know, one of her struggles is that there's really no accurate data available to really differentiate a death from a suicide in our area.
In other words, we have no accurate count of the amount attempted suicide. In other words, we have no accurate count of the amount of attempted suicides in Warren County.
And I think she had made a state, I think she, I believe she had said something that like since 2006, there had been six or something like that that were recorded, like through the data that she looked at. And there've obviously been way more than that in that time. And I think that it's along the same lines as the issues we have with opioid deaths, where depending upon how they're reported, is how they're cataloged in the system. And so, and especially in the state of Pennsylvania, has a really hard time tracking like legitimate death statistics.
And her issue with that is that she would like to apply for grant funds to help her cause. And when they ask for data such as that, she's not able to give that information because there's really no accurate data kept in regard to that. So, you know, but her hope is to, you know, get to the people before those statistics are needed, so.
That's the big thing. Suicide always gonna happen. It's the finding the people that have suicidal ideation and get to them before they commit harm to themselves, or in many cases, they harm somebody else before they harm themselves.
Well, and the big thing that Ms. Swanson was talking about that I was very impressed with was her commitment to prevention. Most of the stuff that I'm aware of is related to grief counseling and stuff related to after it's happened. And I think that it's really great to have these initiatives to kind of make people, or, because even she was talking about there being some different trainings and stuff that can show people how the steps that you take when you find out somebody is having suicidal thoughts or having, because most people don't know how to deal with it, like they, you know, and there are liability issues related to it. And she was talking about there being a step process in place. So I, I think that it's something that Commissioner Morrison and I are very interested in supporting, you know, and the commissioners in general, just because there is, there's an issue in a, in the community with suicide, there is. You know, every community has to deal with it, you know, one way or the other. And I think the more prevention we can engage in, the better.
I asked her a question, if this had, you know, if suicide had affected her or her family personally, to, you know, bring her to want to take on such a task as this. And she said no, that she felt that it was just something that she was called on to do and kind of driven spiritually to do this. So I applaud her effort. I think it's very worthwhile. And anything that the commissioner's office can do to help her with that, I'd certainly like to do that. Okay, so any other questions or?
I just have one more thing. This, we're fine. Last, at the end of last summer, we talked about installing benches on the bike trail. And Dan Glotz and I worked with a Boy Scout on their Eagle Scout, or Eagle Scout project, Hunter Smith, and he basically put the whole plan together in order to install concrete benches along the bike trail. And so we've, we've had them stored through the winter in the warehouse. We've been sealing them over the past couple of weeks with the Boy Scout troop. And now we'll be installing them, we'll be starting to install them on Friday at five o'clock. And we're gonna be taking pictures and different stuff. I'm really excited to see it happen. There's gonna be eight benches installed across along the bike trail. We're gonna have to do several of them at a time because they're about 800 pounds a piece. They're, they're really impressive. Whitemire Block designs them and they, they press them so that they look like wood almost. There's like a grain built into it. It's really neat process. Anyway, they're, they're ready to go. And so the Boy Scout troop's gonna be installing them on Friday. So I think that over the course of the next few weeks, you're gonna see an installation of bike or benches along that stretch, which we've had so many requests from seniors and different people who walk that trail to have spaces to sit and enjoy. I had the pleasure of visiting Sharon, PA this weekend, and they have an unbelievable park that has like ponds and benches and all this stuff. And I felt incredibly competitive this weekend, so I'm looking forward to putting more benches for people to sit and enjoy.
Did you have to see their free golf course?
Yeah, they have the only free golf course in the United States. It's, yeah, I'm feeling very competitive with them now. So, so we're gonna put some benches in on Friday, so I'm excited to do that. That'll be a good project. And Hunter Smith did a wonderful job researching the whole thing and working on it. And we had probably 15 teenagers in the warehouse, like sealing, they put ceiling on all the concrete and stuff. And they helped Dan and I move the concrete around, because Dan and I don't move quite as quickly as we used to. So, and I don't know how, I mean, honestly, I don't know. It was a great idea. Now that we have to install them, I'm kind of like, I, I'm like, I hope you bring like a lot of these kids along to do this, because I don't know how we're gonna get the, these slabs in there, but anyway, that's gonna be fun.
All right. We have an upcoming commissioner meeting this Wednesday at noon, Report Room. The agenda's attached here if anyone would like to see the agenda for the meeting.
There's one thing that I would like to bring up for discussion in that meeting, namely, ABM will be coming back. They presented a work session recently, and we wanted to discuss during that meeting, putting a contract out for bid, or an RFQ out. So it's not a request for quote, it's a request for qualification. They would just be presenting for a few minutes. It's not gonna be something we need to vote on, it's just something I wanted on the agenda to make everybody aware that it'd be there and we'd be talking about an RFQ.
Anything further?
That's not for the agenda, but I just want to thank the commissioners for the support of our veterans and family picnic over the weekend. Jeff, thanks for bringing your boys out. They seemed like they had a good time.
They had a great time.
We're hoping we can do it again next year, but we just gotta see if we can come up with the funding, because...
Well, I think, I think in anticipation of that, you should, I really think that we should talk about having some regular meetings between your office and ours to discuss how we can assist, you know, and stuff like that. Because I think there are some things we can do in order to help, you know, promote it and build it up. Because I felt like that could be a regional event, like, you know, people from Jamestown, people from outside the county even coming to it, because that park's big enough. And I, every time I go down there, I'm always like, gosh, why don't we do more events down there? Because it's a great space, but it was just, it was a great time. It was good, good, we had a lot of fun.
Right now, we're very fortunate in the fact that the Hellwood gives us a use of that park at no charge. We're one of the few organizations they'll do that with, so.
That's great.
Do you have a budget?
They just started doing that.
Do you have a budget that we could look at?
The commissioners gave a small amount. We do this through the Veterans Council. And last year, I think we spent about somewhere between 12 and 13,000. This year, it cost us closer to 10. We did downsize a little bit, but still more than what we're taking in. And we can't keep spending more than we're taking in or the money we've raised over the years is gonna diminish quickly.
Well, it's just, I think that there's a lot that we can do to help promote it. I think that's the big thing, is to get people down there, because it's, like last year, when you did it, you were competing. There were a couple of events at the same time.
We competed with the Rouse, and then we didn't find out till yesterday that we were competing with the Youngsville American Legion on their Big Rose picnic. And, I mean, we sent out flyers to everybody saying this is our anticipated date. Nobody said, you know, they were doing anything.
I hadn't have been at the Marine Corps League, so.
Yeah, so summertime's a bad time to have an event, but it's the only time you can host up like that.
It's hard.
It is hard to pick a good date.
Yeah.
Well, you might want to consider instead of annually, having it every other year or, I don't know.
I'm afraid if we went to every other year, that it would be less attended.
I think.
Because then people would forget, you know. We're trying to get it, if we can find a date that works and then have it that date every year.
The third Saturday and blah, blah, or whatever, you know.
Oh, that Mr. Burton that was there. Remember? The 98-year-old World War II veteran?
Oh, yeah, I think he was probably the oldest World War II vet there. But one of the neat things that we did was Mark Woody read the reason of the folding of the flag. And we had a veteran from every, every war we've been in since World War II, holding the flag as it was being folded. And then the last person holding it was a World War II vet.
That was nice.
And he put three adwords, and he said, "You don't know how much that meant to me."
Yeah, it was a real emotional thing in the afternoon. It was good. It was just great.
And if you've never read all the different reasons for all the different folds, you should look it up. It's pretty impressive. I'd never heard it before, Saturday. It'd be chills.
Do you have those leaflets in your office?
Not the reason for the fold, but I can get it.
Yeah, they're available from the state.
Yeah. It's neat to read.
It is. All right. Does anyone have any further, any directors comment?
The only other comment I was, is after, reminded me after Chris Ferguson was talking about Eagle Scout projects. The one old building that we have at Watson Tower Site, the, we had, it was just maintenance and my maintenance budget. We bought some lumber and screws and nails and had an Eagle Scout project redo the building that we can, we're gonna put amateur radio equipment in there just as a, you know, because that's, that's one tower site that we're not gonna decommission as we move ahead because it's owned by the county and we don't pay any rent or anything like that. So we're looking at putting some more amateur radio equipment up there through the Laurel Highlands. On most of the stuff that we're working on and doing is, is no cost to the county, but it would be a tremendous asset. There's amateur radio repeaters up there and, you know, equipment. My son belongs to the amateur radio venturing group and our auxiliary communication service people. We're gonna try to utilize that building a little more now. It was already there, it wasn't in use. So it's, yeah, the building's about core the size of this room, so it's not, it's not a huge building, but we can put equipment in there and it might even have the Scouts, the venturing crew meet there, you know, a couple times a year instead of just regular places and just be able to use it for that.
That reminds me, something that I keep meaning to throw out, just to the other commissioners and to anyone else that's interested, I believe it was last week, or maybe it was the week before, I can't remember, Dan Glotz and Rich Hatfield and I went and visited the Grundeville landfill in order to do a view of that as a part of this whole effort to shut it down. When we were done with that, we went down the road to Birds All Eady, which is the old CCC camp that has been used for a variety of things. And then I think the last utilization of it was for Girl Scouts. And went toward that space and it, right now, it's abandoned. And the structures there are in fantastic shape. The grass is overgrown, the windows are boarded up, but the camp itself is in really great shape. The roof was redone like 10, in classic federal government fashion, or classic government fashion, they dumped a bunch of money into it and then abandoned it. So, well, I shouldn't say they banned it. My understanding is, is that the Girl Scouts, I think, had challenges utilizing it with the number of people they had and everything. Anyway, I think that it's a perfect place to figure out a public-private partnership of some type to utilize that space. I think that there's a lot of potential there. I just, it would take somebody to be getting really creative with it in order to use it for something, but there is no reason that camp should not be utilized for a variety of things, you know. I had talked with a couple of people in, that work for various human services companies about turning it into some kind of rehab, that you could go, you know, hiking and, you know, and be, you know, do a week's respite and, because it's, it's like less, it's less than a quarter of a mile from the river, like hike-wise. And it's, it's remote, but it's not so far away from, you know, society that if you don't, if you had an issue or anything, you couldn't get emergency management there. But just throwing that out there, if anybody's got any fantastic ideas, let me know.
What's the name of that?
Birds All Eady.
Birds All?
It's, yeah, Birds.
Birds All Eady. Probably went there.
No, yes, I did, many times. Swam in that frigidly cold pool.
They've actually, they built a new pool.
Did they?
They had built a new pool, like five years ago. Well, probably more than that, because it's probably been closed for five. Yeah, they did.
It was like six or eight years ago.
Yeah, because the last couple of years it was open as the Girl Scout camp, the Boy Scouts used it as a Cub Scout camp for overnight, where now they've moved down to Wilder Field, but because, you know, they used to have, almost did, but when you're talking Cub Scouts and needing a lot more parents, it just, almost did, it's so far out of the way, where if you actually put an X through Warren County, it lands on the Forrester Restaurant. So it's like, Birds All Eady is like the very center of Warren County, you know, the same way with the landfill. I mean, it's, it's dead there. I know one of the issues there was, was the old house up there, there was mold issues, but I don't, I don't, still don't, nobody can remember the whole story of why.
Yeah.
Except the, the old, the dining hall is fantastic.
It's amazing. I walked, well, when you see it from the road, you think, ugh, you know, and then when you get up, you're like, wait, all the roofs are new, like the interior's been, I mean, there's some paint that needs to be done, but the floors are in fantastic shape and the, you know, you'd have to do, you know, and they have an outside stove, like a chimney stove that so you could cook on the outside and, you know, and then they have like a barn that's, it's basically a hall with a basketball hoop in it, and then it has a stage with a curtain and everything. I was, I was like, this place is amazing. And it's just sitting there, like, you know, it's, and so, I don't know. I just, if we could figure out something to do with that, I think that would be, I think that, I like, whenever I see a place where it's like in decent shape and you say, okay, what's it gonna be like in 10 years or five years? And you say, if we could figure out a way to utilize it, you know, that to me, are the places you want to look at. Like, if you look at a place and you go, okay, it's gonna cost a fortune just to get this usable, then you're kind of like, okay, how do we demo it? I, we, I think one of the things that we talked about doing is using, like setting up a conservation, a CCC museum there or something, figuring out a way to get like DCNR money. Because I'm always, this goes back to the competitive thing, this is like, I go to Otters County, they got the lumber museum, DCNR sank a fortune into that. Then you go to McKeen County, and they got the Kinzu Bridge, and they sank a fortune into that, and they got this fantastic location that people go to from all around the country. And like, I'm like, will we get that in Warren? Can we get something in Warren? And then when I was standing outside that, you know, that was something to dance, it was like, could we turn it a CCC museum? Like, because I don't know, I don't know how much stuff there is like that floating around, but I don't know. Anyway, that's it.
All right. Anything from anyone else? All right, well, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thanks.